Another meeting of the Board of Appeals to order for December the 12th. If you kindly stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. We'll just note for the record, we do have an excused absence of Ron Fagan, who has a matter to attend to tonight. I think everybody else is present. And next on our agenda would be the acceptance of the minutes for October the 10th and November the 14th. I probably hear the motions for each of them separately.
Motion to accept the minutes of October 10th, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll declare that approved.
Motion to accept the minutes of November 14th, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead.
I'll have discussion about the minutes, okay?
Okay.
In reading the minutes from November 14th, I specifically asked everybody who spoke that was against the tower there, how many cellphones they had. And in the minutes of the meeting, with the exception of two people, there was no mention of any of the other people for the number of cellphones that they had. And I specifically asked, because I wanted to see how many cellphones, how many people were carrying cellphones and how many weren't, and I can't accept the minutes they were, as they're written, because of the lack of the knowledge of the cellphones that all of the people had. And it wasn't one or two, they all had multiple cellphones.
Okay, well, might I make a suggestion as it relates to the November 14 minutes? Maybe you ought to withdraw that motion and continue it to the special meeting?
I have no need to withdraw it, Mr. Chair. The minutes are not designed to be an exhaustive recitation of the occasions of the meetings. So I have no reason to withdraw.
I would just like the minutes to be accurate, that's all.
The minutes may be accurate, Alan, but they're not necessarily exhaustive. Every word of every person is not recorded in the minutes.
That's not true, that's not true. I specifically asked every person if they had cellphones.
I asked a number of questions as well, Alan. There were plenty of questions asked, there were plenty of questions answered. This is not a recordation of the dialogue. If you want to refer to dialogue, then you can go to the tape, Alan. There is a public record called the video recording, that any person is welcome to go and view.
Well, I just think that it should be noted, okay? Because it's my feeling that if all those people that were opposed to this cellphone, if that cell tower was going to be up on my street, Bear Hill, they would all be at a restaurant that night, they wouldn't be at this meeting. Okay? And their only concern, because it's, quote, "It's not in my backyard, it's the old NIMBY theory."
So what does that have to do with tonight, Alan?
Okay. Why isn't those people with the cellphones, who were all opposed to it, mentioning that they all had cellphones?
Because the minutes are not exhaustive. Every word that is uttered tonight.
In your opinion.
There has never been a set of minutes that records every word spoken in a meeting, Alan.
I'm not asking for every word to be spoken, I'm just saying, I think it should be noted how many cellphones each person had.
Fair enough. So noted, Mr. Chair. Is there a second? It may be worth asking if there's a second.
Well, I think what I'd like to do on this, having reviewed the minutes, because all other matters were continued, with the exception of that particular item of which I am recused on, I would prefer that those minutes for that date be continued to your special meeting, and then you guys can discuss them at that point.
We can pass the buck to any meeting we want, that's fine, Mr. Chair.
That would be great. So why don't we table, I would suggest we table the November 14 minutes to the special meeting. Okay?
Do we need a motion to table, Mr. Chair?
It would be helpful.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'd like it to be noted, Mr. Chair, that the minutes are not designed to be an exhaustive recitation of the occurrences that are at a public meeting.
Right.
And let it be so noted, that that's one member's personal opinion.
Have you ever seen every word recorded in the minutes? You have never objected in the past, Alan.
Can I just, can I just?
Suddenly because you have this idea about people having cellphones, this anecdotal notice about everybody in the audience carrying cellphones.
In your opinion, Paul.
Suddenly, everything needs, suddenly every word needs to appear in the minutes. That is an impossible task for any person.
I think that's very important. I think when we're talking about cellphones, okay, we know how many cellphones each applicant, each individual has.
We heard it, go over to the tape.
Guys, there's a motion with a second now, to table it to your special meeting date. Okay? Handle the minutes that night, please. All right, is there?
Yeah, I'll buy that.
I'm going to call the vote on that. All in favor of tabling that to the special meeting?
Aye.
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 Opposed, no.
So noted. It's tabled. I'm going to go a little out of order.
Oh, I put them in order.
Because I have a continuance.
There are continuings, huh?
Yes, but there's one of which, there is a motion, there is a request and a signed time waiver, number seven, from 197 High Street, applicant is requesting a continuous date till January 9th, 2018 meeting. Valerie has provided us with the signed waiver, as it relates to that. So we could check that off the agenda. Anybody want to be heard on that? Just here a motion to?
I'll make the motion to continue. 197, the petition at 197 High Street to our January 9th meeting?
January 9th, yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so continued. Okay, Valerie, we'll leave that for you. All right, so Attorney Vaughn is representing number three and number four, respectively. My understanding is the number four party is here for, is that incorrect?
Well, my agenda, I think actually has it in for three being Boxford Street.
Oh, really?
You can make note that things can be taken out of order, there's a little notice on the bottom, so it's at the, even though I did put them in order, this is as well as.
All right, so we're going to take Boxford Street.
Yes, we're going to take Boxford Street.
Fine, so that's a continued hearing. You did not go forward at the last date, right? It was continued from the, okay. So I think everybody that was at the October meeting is here to continue hearing your petition. All right, so this is for the property located at 470 500 and 530 Brockton Street, map 105C, parcel 41, 42, and 43. Okay, where did we leave off last?
So just to kind of, I guess, refresh our memory, this is out on Boxford Street. There are currently three existing lots, which have been taxed for years as developable lots. One of the lots has an existing structure, which is really close to the road, nonconforming. The request is for contiguous buildable area variances to combine what are three lots into two lots, which would be compliant in all regards with zoning, but for contiguous buildable area. We're seeking to build a single-family home on each of the lots. Prior to this meeting, we submitted updated revised building plans. I think the original application, we had just had a sketch plan. So we've now submitted two 11 by 17 plan sets, one for each home. Shows, I think, substantially more detail what we're.
What the home was going to look like, right?
And I think the, another issue that was raised at the last hearing was with respect to drainage, and there wasn't a butter that was present, and raised some concern about some culverts. What we've included in our packets is a letter from our engineer indicating that he would design a stormwater, like a retention system, to treat any surface flow from the roofs of the two new structures, so that, designed such that there wouldn't be any increased flow as a result of the two structures being added. But in addition to that, I guess what we would like to mention is that the culverts is an existing condition. If you're familiar with the area, there's obviously substantial wetlands. They're designed to take the flow from off of one side of the street, over to the other side of the street. The culverts are on town-owned property, they're town-owned culverts. They've been there for quite some time, so I don't, I don't think that we should be necessarily punished for the existence of these culverts. One of the, I guess, issues, and we have some pictures, which we could submit to you if you care to see them, of the existing culverts, is apparently there's been some historical issue surrounding these, where on the opposite side of the street, one of the butters has been kind of.
Who's culvert side of the, town culvert?
They're town culverts. But one of the.
Town culvert.
Excuse me?
What is a town culvert?
So perhaps best if I show you these, if I can approach.
Are you saying like the town made them?
Yeah, so one side of the road is a drainage ditch.
It's not a natural, it's a man-made culvert.
No, it's a man-made culvert here, so that, this is at the edge of the park, and it's a tunnel going underneath.
I see, but the town made that?
Correct.
Not a landover.
And it's within the town right of way.
Right, not a landover, the town made it.
Exactly. But one of the issues which has existed here is, if you look, this is the culvert across the street, where the butter's property is, and you can see that someone's been stacking, this is the top edge of the culvert, someone's been stacking land debris in here, in an effort to effectively block the culvert, as it presently exists.
Well, how do you know someone's been stacking it? How do you know it's not half occurring naturally?
Mr. Donovan's family, years ago, had called the town to clean out the culverts, and a neighbor across the street got really upset, and started yelling at the town workers to leave that alone, and so I guess I can't say with absolute certainty that it's being blocked intentionally, but.
It's kind of secondhand, though, right? Secondhand information?
But I only raise that issue because, you know, in the first place, it's a town-owned culvert, we're dealing with substantial wetlands in the area, obviously. I think the improvements that we're proposing aren't going to substantially increase runoff, in fact, we're.
Are you suggesting that whatever may or may not have happened to that culvert was impacting the wetland component of your lots?
No, I would suggest that, to the extent there is an issue with the culverts, the issue is that it's being blocked, and harming, and causing backup on the opposite side of the street, as opposed to the concern that water is going to be increased in flowing across the street here. And I think the other issue that I would like to raise in connection with this is, after our last meeting, because there are three landowners here, Mike contacted his brothers, just to update them on status, and tell them what happened, and in doing so, one of the other landowners said, gee, I can't believe this, back in 1980-something, when they were looking to build that lot, Conservation was giving them a real tough time, they came across the street, asked us if we'd support them, and in fact, if you remember, we all signed those letters, supporting them building their house effectively in a wetland area. Now, sure, every butter has their right to protect their interests, and there's no obligation of reciprocity, but just in terms of what we're looking to do here, we're looking to take nonconforming structure, remove it, create two nearly entirely conforming lots. We believe we're making the lots much more conforming than they presently are, and we're willing to put in a.
The CBA is driven by the wetland? Is it driven by the wetland component?
Correct.
So there was a letter from last time, from Conservation, that was addressing some of that stuff. Was there anything further that?
No, except to say, the letter suggested that we're creating our own hardship, when in fact, I just think on its face, we're not creating our own hardship, I think on its face, the hardship exists with respect to the three lots, and in fact, we're making, we're mitigating the issue, we're reducing our nonconformities, and making the lot, in fact, more conforming. I think the hardship is with respect to the fact that we've got three lots that have been taxed, and are being taxed as buildable lots.
With CBA, the contiguous buildable area, was that a component of the bylaw that existed when the lots were created?
No.
What is the history of that?
No, not when the lots were created, but the new lots.
When did that, is that, that's something that, that's something that's.
I think it was 1980, I don't want to say offhand, but what I do know, is that under this proposal, the lots are being created now, and we absolutely are going to need to comply with the CBA requirement.
I guess the question I'm raising is, CBA was not a previous hardship, when the lots were created, in terms of your ownership? It's something that was enacted by the town as part of their, their bylaws at some subsequent date, right?
Or were the wetlands increased?
The wetlands have likely increased substantially, from when they were, when the lots were created, in large part because of the Duncan Drive development.
So what's to say that the wetlands aren't going to, are they increasing at a certain rate per year, so are they going to approach on the whole, and, you know, and my other question is, with the Conservation letter that they sent, October 10th, the delineation lines are wrong? Is that, have that, has that been addressed and reviewed and looked at?
The.
The letter from Conservation, October 10th, the plan submitted with the variance request do not reflect the correct delineation of the correct buffer zones.
We had the delineation, we had the A&R plan approved, and our plan reflects what was the wetland line approved on the A&R plan, so.
An A&R plan approved, you have a wetland delineation plan that was approved?
I can say something about the wetlands?
Yeah.
This part of the property is the driest part, it slopes up from the wetlands, the wetlands have always been in the back. There was a time where Duncan Drive is, it was the road that went up to Teal's Farm, you could actually drive from the back of our property across. You could not do that now, but the water is in the back. We're not, this project doesn't go near the back of the property. And it still drains the same way it goes around, on two sides.
You can't build within 50, you can't put a structure pursuant to the bylaw, right, within 50 feet of the delineated wetland line?
Correct, and that was all.
So that's sort of what's driving that CBA component. So if the wetland lines change, I mean, they do, they can change over time, you just give them redeline.
Right, but she certified that. Lewis Engineering went out.
It's called an INRAD, right? Either have an INRAD.
Correct.
Yeah, in fact, I'm certain we have an INRAD, and have it approved in our, because we originally had delayed our submission on this. From the end of last year, we were going to submit, but we did not have an A, an INRAD. So we had the INRAD approved, and then we submitted, and Bill McLeod did it, and it was, in fact, the same delineation as had previously existed, as I recall.
So was it submitted without filing? Did we get a copy of it?
I think, yeah, and I think, in fact, you know what? Included in your, in the package is a copy of the Order of Resource Area Delineation.
April 6th, you did it, and then it was revised May 24th by Andover Consultants, that one?
Andover Consultants.
But this letter is, this memo's dated October 10th, so.
Well, if it's approved, though, it's approved. So that's what I, you know.
Yeah, that's approved.
Yeah, so this is, I mean, this is an approved Order of Resource Area Delineation included, and it was dated May 25th, 17.
Subsurface sewage disposal.
Signed by Conservation Commission.
So you have to do septic designs for that?
Septic designs are already done, and approved.
You're approved.
And the proposed foundation plan that we've submitted is consistent with that septic approval.
A lot of wetlands. So it looks like a lot of wetlands to me.
Yeah.
And I consider that you should.
Back when you could, Duncan Drive was placed in, they took the, when they were building the hydro dam, the Larry Village in Lawrence, they cut it in stone from, carved that out for about three months.
Oh, yeah.
That's where they filled it, that's where they put it.
My question wasn't answered. So are you going to address this memo? I mean, I don't, they're addressing, they're saying plans, can you address that paragraph, that Conservation, on October 10th, the memo, can you address that for me?
So specifically, I'm just looking to find a copy of, was it Jen's? Okay, all right.
Jen, please. Subsurface sewage disposal for Lot 1, dated 4/5.
Yeah, so this is, we, our plan does in fact reflect the correct wetland delineation line.
She says it doesn't.
But.
So your plan, which is dated 4/5, which I'm looking at here, 4/5, April 6th, am I looking at the wrong plan that she's referencing? She's saying that it does not, these plans dated 4/5, 16, prior to the issuance of an ORAD and final confirmed resource area delineation.
So.
I just want to make sure I'm looking at the correct plan. An accurate, correct plan. It could be in my packet, I don't know, if you can direct me where it is?
No, so this says, I guess, resource areas delineate including. So I think she's pointing out the, she's making reference to, I think, the subsurface sewage disposal plans, not to our, not to our variance plan.
So how are they different, though? Wouldn't the delineation be the same on your variance plan, as opposed to you said?
It is, well, it is, and our variance plan is, shows the correct wetlands delineation line. Her reference is to subsurface sewage disposal lot plans, which we submitted for informational purposes, we're not asking you to act on those plans at all, the plan of relevance is the variance plan. And furthermore, her memo notes that if, you know, those lines, that they would require waivers from the Conservation Commission. And admittedly, we know we need waivers from the Conservation Commission, but that's not a variance issue, and.
I guess in theory, let's say the contiguous buildable area that we're looking at was calculated based on the plan that you've submitted, in terms of your INRAD line. And if at some point down the road, someone determines that that line is modified within the appropriate time period, you'd have to come back for a modification, if it's not, if it's not correct, right?
Well, I think.
Because the CBA would be different, maybe.
Yes and no, and this is, I guess this is the issue. What an INRAD effectively does is.
Locks it in, locks in the wetland.
It confirms and locks in the wetland line for, I believe, this period of three years.
Right.
So from that date, for development purposes, that's deemed to be the wetland line. If we get our approval, and we build, and nothing lapses or expires, I don't think, if the wetland line changes, I don't think you ever need to go back, because.
My point is, if you left this board, and you're back at Conservation, right?
Mm-hmm.
And there's a different finding, or there's a different agreed-upon line, or whatever, that you may or may not have to come back. So the line that you've given us is the line we can rely on.
Well, right, if there were. Correct, because if there were.
Because you wouldn't get the building permit.
Exactly, we wouldn't. And I, I mean, we could get approval from this board, leave this board, we still don't have approval to build, because we need approval from Conservation Commission, and we're going to have to file with Conservation Commission, and we're going to have to seek, you know, it's not a zoning variance, which would be within the purview of this board, it's going to be a waiver or variance from Conservation setbacks, but that's not a, that's not a zoning concern, that's Conservation concern, and we know that we're not going to be able to.
They don't always like the lines we set, right? Sometimes they don't even like the lines we set. Sometimes they make plan, they change plans.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, I guess when you say the lines we set.
Well, there was a project not too long ago, that we, you know, we moved a road or a driveway or something, to facilitate a project, and then I think that when the applicant got before Conservation, you know, they still wanted something else changed in order to accommodate whatever their requirements were. So I guess I'm sort of agreeing with you in that context, because just because we set something, doesn't mean they're going to approve it.
Right, and just because we get a building variance for contiguous buildable area, doesn't mean that they're going to be inclined to grant a waiver or a variance, but that's something that we have to seek and obtain from Conservation Commission, just.
So since the October meeting, has anything else come in to us from Conservation with respect to this issue? And have you guys filed anything with Conservation since the October meeting? So nothing, nothing's happened.
We haven't asked them of it to provide any, either, so.
Well, we didn't ask for that letter, that came in suaspekte. I mean, they just, they just sent that, you know, in terms of this application, we didn't request anything. That's why I'm asking if they had sent anything else on their own initiative.
But it's actually nice to have.
It's very nice to have. Yeah, I mean, I'm not assigning value to it, I'm just noting that the effort was taken to send that in, but then nothing else has come in. But you also haven't done anything either, so I don't know what any of that means.
Well, no, and we haven't, because the issues that she raised are Conservation Commission issues. It's, it's, again, you know, we recognize that we need to file with Conservation Commission, we're subject to their jurisdiction, and we need them to issue an order, and we need to get potentially waivers or relief from that board as well, but that's not, that's not zoning relief, I mean.
And I noticed from Mr. McLeod, there was a letter that, wherever I put it, he was noting that although you're exempt from stormwater management, that under the CMRs, you're willing to include subsurface recharge systems to capture, detain, and recharge stormwater from the rooftops of the proposed dwelling. Does that relate to us, or is that a Conservation matter?
I would say that it relates to you. I would say that it relates to you because of the fact that, that's relevant, I guess, to potentially contiguous buildable area and the issue that is, was raised specifically with respect to drainage issues and, and, and butter issues with respect to the culvert.
So you have to provide that, so if you had a filing at CONCOM, do you have to, do you have to provide that information, that design?
Bill absolutely.
The subsurface recharge area?
It will, it will need to be approved in connection with the, the plan that's submitted in the order commissioned that goes before Conservation. Whether or not there would be a requirement to have that, we might not have it. I would envision that this board would include a condition that we would include it, and then we would be obligated to include it.
So if you're, if you're exempt from DEP stormwater standards, which is their jurisdiction.
Right.
We would probably be conditioning, I would envision, to the extent that were to be approved, something that relates exactly on those points, so to address the drainage issues of the area, particularly if culverts are getting blocked up or not blocked up.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think if you impose a condition, that would be what would obligate us to construct it. I don't think that.
Because they wouldn't have the authority?
Right.
They wouldn't have the authority under DEP to impose stormwater standards on two lots?
Yeah, not for a single family, I don't believe so. And, I mean, let me put it this way, Al. I absolutely, Bill McLeod is a great engineer, and he knows his, his Conservation issues.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I was reading it right.
So I, from what he, he said that we would, we would not be subjected to their jurisdiction under those regs. I don't think we would be obligated to put in a detention system unless it were imposed by this board, by a condition.
Yep.
Which is what we would, would proffer or propose in accordance with the letter we submitted, just so that this board knows that you had a concern raised by, in a butter with respect to potential runoff caused by additional impervious surfaces. Well, our engineers will design and include a subsurface detention system engineered to capture the runoff such that there's no increase as a result of, of the structures.
So there were some butters at the last meeting. I don't, I don't see any butters here at this meeting. What else? Anything else you guys want to cover? I don't want to interrupt your proposal if you have more, more to give. I was just trying to see where we are here.
Another thing that we would like to include, I guess, in the record is, in addition to the, the new floor plans and architecturals, we also had a, a concept plan by the architect that is showing kind of more of a 3D of the proposed homes. We think they're really consistent with what's been put out there on the budding properties. We think that the, we think that this is really a, a good and fair resolution from a zoning perspective, given the hardships which exist with, with the three existing lots. It's probably an outcome which wouldn't be able to be negotiated except in the context of they're owned by brothers and everyone's taken a little bit of a, of a hit, I guess, in terms of what they thought they had by way of buildable lots, what they've been taxed at. And I think two buildable lots are feasible. It's been approved by the Board of Health in, as far as the septic systems are concerned. I think, you know, that the issue that's, that's raised by Conservation, I believe it's, it's, it's a fair one and needs to be dealt with. However, I, I think it's, it's something that's really within the purview of Conservation as far as those, those waivers are concerned. And we know we have to go there, and we know we need their approval. And if we don't have their approval when we go before them, then, you know, maybe we see if there's something else we can re-engineer, or maybe we're, we're, we're back before you again, or maybe we're dealing with it with them in whatever venue that becomes. But, but as far as the actual zoning issues, I believe our, our plan, I mean, your, your filing requirements specify to include the, the order. We've submitted the order. The order is consistent with the wetback, the delineation that's, that's shown on our plan. The, the setback lines, which she's talking about, are not for purposes of the variance we're seeking. They're going to be for purposes of compliance with the Conservation Commission's separate regulations. And we'll have to, to deal with that in that venue. I'm not, I'm not suggesting we don't. I'm suggesting that our plan includes the wetland delineation as approved by the, the Conservation Commission, and that's what's relevant for purposes of the CBA variance which we're seeking.
So do we have everything? Have we received everything that you want to submit? I don't know in terms of our record. Do we have one of those pictures?
Yeah, you can keep this.
I don't know if we can store it. We'll take it.
Oh.
Hold it up, I guess.
Excuse me.
Maybe, maybe it'll scan it or something.
I'm, I would, I would guess, I would, I would say, in my opinion, and Mike, I don't know, you disagree, I think, I think, I think you've got everything. Actually, I don't know if you want to include these pictures of the culverts as well, just to have on your record.
You're welcome to.
Yeah. Might as well include those. We'll give these to Val as well. But the only other, the other comment, I guess, would be if there's anything that anyone on the board feels is substantially missing or not addressed, I think, you know, we've, we feel as though we've addressed the relevant issues, but.
I think, I mean, I don't want to speak for Ms. McIntyre, but it sounds like she had issues with the Conservation letter, so.
I'm all set.
Anything else anyone was looking for?
No.
I'm on Mr. Vaughn's side. Whatever we approve or disapprove here, he still has the Conservation roadblock that he has to hit.
Right.
And that's their job.
And we recognize.
And that's their job. And that's what they get paid for, let them do their work. That's the way I see it. I don't see the zoning issue. I think it's a Conservation issue. My opinion, but my opinion here, I guess, doesn't sound for much. That's my opinion.
Well, neither.
Mine doesn't count for much either, Alan. But where I'm coming from is, I, I think I'm, I'm in agreement with the proposal that for reducing, you know, the number of lots from three to two, I think that generally that is a, a good thing and a positive thing, and certainly something worth taking extraordinarily seriously. Where I, where I fall down, I think, in Alan's view, is that but for the Conservation issue, we don't have a zoning issue because it's contiguous buildable area. But for the wetlands, you have plenty of contiguous buil- buildable area. So I think, I may be mistaken, so, so please correct me. So it, it's hard for me to unwind and just say, you know what, if it's wetlands, Paul, it's just Conservation will deal with it. Well, if that's the case, then there's no reason to be before this board because the wetlands is the contiguous buildable area. We don't have an issue but for the wetlands.
I think I can answer that question, though. And the reason is this, though there's an overlay of Conservation issues and wetland line, there's a specific zoning provision in the zoning bylaw, which is the CBA provision, the contiguous buildable area. Thereby, taking what is a Conservation issue, injecting it right into the dead center of our zoning bylaw and saying, oh, yeah, in addition to these dimensional requirements for lots, setback, et cetera, you also, for these particular lots, need to comply with this CBA requirement. Therefore, making what is partially a Conservation issue into a zoning issue. And the concept being that, okay, it's not just having a lot of a certain size and configuration, but a lot of a certain size and configuration with an area which is contiguous such that it's appropriate sitting for a, a home or structure. So that's the variance, that's the, the ZBA, the zoning issue. However, separate and apart from any of that, there's always all kinds of Conservation issues if you're within the area of jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, and that's where you need to go seek an, an order of condition and comply with their requirements and meet their standards and seek and obtain their waivers or variances, variances in the Conservation world being very different than variances in the zoning world. So those issues are, are variance issues that need to be dealt with, and I say variance in, in the context of Conservation variance issues that, that need to be dealt with and approved, if they so choose to approve them. But to, to over, to, to, to take, I guess, the memo of the Conservation Administrator and view the variance request in the context of zoning variance versus Conservation variance, it's really two totally different standards. It's, you know, different issues. In, in our world, we're looking at the lots, the three lots, we're turning them to two lots. We're also looking at, if you look at the existing structure on this plan, we're looking at a, a house which exists, which is practically in the right-of-way. We're in the, the front yard setback. Well, we're also wiping out that house, getting rid of any non-conformities in terms of, of setback, and we're creating, from a zoning perspective, what will appear when you drive by to be much more consistent with, with the neighborhood, the houses in the neighborhood, a better setback from the road, more compliant with, with zoning generally than what we have. Now, in the Conservation Commission world, where your concern is about any impact on resource areas, well, sure, you might say, well, you're creating a hardship by putting two houses here. You know what? We could, if we have just, just one house where it is, it's farther away from the wetlands. Well, that's, that's a different analysis than, I guess, you know, what, what this board is charged with. And so I don't in any way, when I say, you know, it's, it's not your purview, it's not relevant, but it's really two entirely separate analyses that we're looking at, one of them being protection of, of the resource areas and, and how it's constructed and, and how close we can get to wetlands lines and, and those issues. And then the, the other one being the zoning compliance. And because those setback issues that she's raising, I believe are issues dealt with under Conservation Commission guidelines, they're not zoning issues. The only reason we have a zoning issue is because of the specific contiguous buildable area provision. So.
I hear you loud and clear that there are two sets of variances, that there are two sets of standards with, with two sets of goals. I'm, you know, I'm perfectly aligned on, on that part of the presentation. What, I, I guess where I'm, again, falling down is, and, and not necessarily objecting, by the way, this is, this is just something I would, I would like to have sorted out or aired out for the, for the board, because this, I'm certain that this is going to come up again for us. Many, many of us are newer than some of the other members who've likely seen it all before.
But forgot it as soon as I walked out the door, so don't be bitter.
So I, I'm not looking at this, my lens at which I'm looking at this is actually not through the, the memo that Ms. McIntyre has, has raised, because in, in my mind, much of the, the letter, that the, that, much of the substance and the, the problems that the letter raises is kind of pretty bluntly fixed by just removing the old subsurface plans and saying, that's no longer part of my package, you know, there's no reason to rely on those in any way. And I have every faith, much like Alan does, and much like I think every, you and everybody else does, is that the CONCOM is absolutely going to address the granular elements of the wetlands. We, in my mind, this board is charged with a 40,000-foot view of contiguous buildable area and the problem, you know, the, the reason that we have that issue is because there, unfortunately, there's wetlands. And so now we have kind of an overlap and a confusion of jurisdiction and purpose. It's hard, what, the challenge for me, no matter what I think of the merits of, of the project, and I think that there, that there's lots of merit in this project, the challenge that I have is, if contiguous buildable area is the substance of the pair of variances, then I gotta, I, you know, I gotta look at that. And to, and for me to say to myself, well, it's wetlands, so it's Conservation, it's going to go somewhere else, that means that I don't have to look at this. I just got to rubber stamp this baby and be on my, my way. And I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that. I don't know how to get more comfortable. Do you, you know, made a, a rational presentation for the, the separation of the two and the identification of the two zones of influence between the CONCOM and the ZBA? So how do I get comfortable with the purpose of our, our conversation about these two variances regarding contiguous buildable area being nothing more than a rubber stamp, let's leave it to CON, the CONCOM? How do, how do I, like, reconcile that?
Well, I mean, I can, I can see the interplay between, they had these pre-existing lots, and then over time came more regulations. You know, there came, you know, the Wetland Act, and then the bylaw, which extends the wetland in terms of the usable area out another 25 feet. So you get the 50 feet, no disturbance, no structure, which, you know, takes away from your contiguous buildable area. That all came after the fact. And I, I can see how even the contiguous buildable area component came after the fact. When you had these lots, these lots were in existence. So, I mean, I can see how there is the interplay between these various regulations and how they've chewed away at the usability or functionality of the lot. You know, I mean, what you do or don't do at Conservation, to me, is, is a material at this point. You have a set wetland line that you're using for us to rely on, and that's the calculation for the contiguous buildable area. And I can see how the hardship relates to that because but for the wetland regulations or the contiguous buildable area regulation, you wouldn't be requesting relief because you had, you had the three lots. And I know that the wetland lines change over time, or can change over time due to various components. I can only look at the one plan that you've submitted. I mean, so I, I can see the interplay, you know, between, you know, you're losing a lot, you're effectively losing a lot, and you're trying to make the best type of land use decision you can, going from three to two, looking for the request of relief that maybe you wouldn't have needed at some other point in time. So, I mean, I, I can see the nexus in, in that regard. But, you know, in terms of anything else that would change, whatever other variances you need from Conservation, how that impacts your wetland line that drives your request for variance, you know, that's reserved for another day. You know, because if, if it were to be approved, and your line changes, and you got to come back within the, the two or three-year requirement, then you got to come back. If the lines stay the same, they stay the same. So, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with the presentation. I'm, you know, I'm relieved that there's, they're addressing some stormwater because, you know, clearly that's always an issue. They're showing us what they're trying to build as, as opposed to not showing us anything because I think that it's very hard to visualize a concept without having. without having plans filed and seeing the results. Because, you know, you can tie that together in a decision. And, you know, we can regulate that. So, I mean, I understand the burden and the interplay, for what it's worth.
I just appreciate the point about stormwater retention on the lots. And I think that kind of solves the neighbors' issue, the voters' issue, so.
Yeah, so if you have nothing else to submit, if you want to rest on what you had, we can close the public hearing, and the board can deliberate. You know, we'll take what you have and just.
I mean, I think we're comfortable to close and put it in your hands.
You need four votes, the supermajority, so four people have to be in favor. I think everybody that was here in the October meeting is here tonight, right? In terms of our regular members, you guys were here in October?
I was.
Right? Paul, you were here, right?
I was here, absolutely, Mr. Chair. I was looking at Valerie for some validation.
Yeah, okay, well, I mean, so.
It's a variance.
It's a variance.
So we need three.
No, variance needs four.
Variance needs four?
Yep. Variances need four, special permits need four. So, that's just how it works. So you get the full board, everybody, there's been, you continued at the last hearing, so. If you want us to close the hearing, we'll close it and move it along.
Yeah, we'll close and put our fate in your trusted hands.
I'll make a motion to have we close the hearing.
All right, motion.
I'll second that.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, declare the motion, the hearing closed. So deliberation as to the request and.
My two cents is, if we look forward two, three years now, if we allow this man to do what he wants to do, is the town better off with what he wants to propose with these two houses? Or we better, do you want to be stuck with three lots that do nothing? I think it's better for the town, I think it's better for this person, and I think it's an overall plus-plus-plus to allow this, and let conservation do their job. That's my two cents. I have to look forward to see what's better for the town. And I think the town is improved by this.
Any other discussion?
No. No, no. Okay, so we generally will move, we move everything in the affirmative. And then see if there's enough votes, if we can find the public, if we can find the public hearing notice.
I have, Mr. Chair, I have the notice, but it's the assemblage of the plans that I will fumble, so. If I read this and you stack up plans, would you help fellow out?
Aw, come on, all right.
Except for the old and inaccurate subsurface.
Before you start, I have to ask before your, yeah, there was some mention of possibly imposing a condition with respect to stormwater retention, is that?
Yeah, so typically, someone will make the motion, and then you can talk about the conditions that you'd want to add or amend them. If you want to say something now, feel free.
That was part of the set of plans I was looking for, there were stormwater plans, right?
Is that our purview or is that conservation?
Submit stormwater plans as well?
You may be confusing it with a different application.
So there's a letter, there's a letter, date of December 5th, to us from Dennis Gricki from Andover Consultants, that talks about how DEP stormwater standards under the CMR 310, CMR 10.5612 are exempt. But we could always, but just because they're exempt under conservation doesn't mean that we can't condition it as an approval for the purposes of subsurface recharge, capture drain, stormwater runoff, rooftops and so forth. Do you have this letter?
All right, yes, I do. So, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the application of Michael Thomas and Cornelius Donovan for property at 460, I think, 50530 Boxford Street, map 105.0 C, parcels 041042043, North Andover, Massachusetts, 01845 in the R1 zoning district. The petitioner has requested dimensional variances for 460, 50530 Boxford Street to allow for a lot line adjustment between properties depicted as assessors' map 105.0 C, parcel 041 with adjacent property depicted as assessors' map 105.0 C, parcel 042 with adjacent property depicted as assessors' map 105.0 C, parcel 043. The variance requested is for lot area pursuant to 7.1 in Table 2 of the zoning bylaw, dimensional requirements for lot area. And there is also a variance for minimum contiguous buildable area pursuant to 7.1.1 of the zoning bylaw in the R1 zoning district. Along with that, motion to approve, Mr. Chair, come a handful of plans. There is a plan showing wetlands, Boxford Street, North Andover, Mass., prepared for Michael Donovan, date April 6, 2017, revised May 24, 2017. That appears to be only one of one. There is additionally a plan of land in North Andover, Massachusetts, prepared for Michael Donovan, town of Andover, and Cornelius J. Donovan, dated December 20, 2016. And there's an historical plan in support of this, Mr. Chair, which is recorded at, it's called the Plan of Land in North Andover, Massachusetts, surveyed for Catherine Donovan in December 1970, revised in March 1977. Looks like it's, I don't know, is that Book 27? No, it looks like it's Instrument 7580. Also, Mr. Chair, there are a handful of, she was, conceptual plans drawn by WA Harley &amp; Associates, architectural engineers, 88 North Main Street, Andover, Mass., 1810. The date of this is December 1, 2017. Drawing number 562, there is an A1. A2 and A3, those are for Lot 1. There's also an A4 for Lot 1, I beg your pardon, and A5. So for Lot 1, there's A1 through A5. And for Lot 2, there is similarly an A1, A2, A3, A4, and A5. Further, as a condition, Mr. Chair, we have a letter from Andover Consultants, dated December 5, 2017, to the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding the concerns raised regarding the impact of the proposed development of the lots on nearby wetlands and culverts. Although everybody's acknowledged that this project is exempt from DEP stormwater standards under 310 CMR 10.05612, housing development or redevelopment project comprised of detached dwellings on 4 fewer lots. The applicant has indicated a willingness to include subsurface recharge systems to capture, detain, or recharge stormwater runoff from the roofs of proposed dwellings. And we're making a condition of approval, making this installation of subsurface recharge systems a condition of approval. I think I said that three or four times. Is that everything?
Did you, I didn't hear you say what they're asking for, relief? Or do you need to cite that, or do you just want to?
Well, they are looking, should say.
Minimum CBA lot is 75, Lot 1 is 75.5%. They're requesting 51.86 with a variance of 23.14. Lot 2, CBA required is 75%. They're requesting 46.03 with a variance of 28.97.
And in support of the raw numbers, Mr. Chair, is the proposed lot is 87,120 square feet. Read these with me, so the minimum CBA would have been 65,340, but the actual is 33,891. And Lot 2, the minimum CBA was 65,340, and they have 30,079 square feet.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion is second. Are there any other conditions? All right, motion is second, so I stand down here. Doug, are you in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yep.
Alan?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Okay, I'm also in favor of this. It's deemed approved, we'll issue a decision within 14 days.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That's done.
Okay. And. Last one. Last one. Okay. So the next hearing we have is the Cronin hearing, 234 Dale Street. Attorney Vaughn, you representing Mr. Cronin?
Yes. So, I guess initially, my, you may recall from the prior hearing, Mr. Cronin was looking to expand the size of his home to deal with his expanding family. And in fact, he did expand his family prior to expansion of his home. He's unable to be with us this evening because his wife just gave birth to their newest daughter, Catherine. So he apologizes that he's unable to be here. Since the last meeting, I did submit a few documents in response to some inquiries raised previously. First, we submitted a revised variance plan, corrected some typographical errors, including, I think, in the prior plan, it made reference to the town of Middleton as opposed to town of North Andover with respect to the tax map, we've corrected that. We have now included the reference to the applicable wetland line as well as the 100-foot non-disturbed, non-discharge zone. So that was, I guess, one submission was correcting some typos on the plan. Secondly, one of the issues that was raised at the last meeting was with respect to drainage issues and concerns. So the engineers have submitted some drainage calculations. And I believe, in fact, Paul, this may have been in the prior matter, your confusion with respect to a plan. They did, in fact, revise the proposed watershed special permit plan to include a stormwater drainage system.
Is this still open to planning, did you file this?
Excuse me?
Was this at planning?
It is not at planning, and they have not yet filed at planning.
Can you refresh my recollection as to why?
Because this isn't a request for just the standard variance to build. This is a request from the actual, it's a request for a variance from the size of a structure that may be built. So the bylaw has a specific restriction on the percentage increase that can be added for gross floor area. We're seeking a variance to build a larger addition than we're otherwise allowed to build. When Mr. Cronin had originally gone to the building department and was reviewing the applications, it was suggested to him by the planning staff that they've never approved anything in excess of the 50% threshold, because that's what it requires. And they wouldn't be able to do that unless he had a variance for that. His discussions with Don Belangia were, "Well, you're within your right to apply for the variance, but you should get a variance for this before you're able to then submit its planning." So.
So we're only, this is only a size variance? This isn't the watershed we're talking about?
He needs a watershed special permit. If you approve his variance.
But there's no request for a variance from the watershed's district.
For, for the.
Right?
Yeah, because it's, it's, I mean, technically, I guess it is, because it's an addition. You still have to come to you first for an addition to a structure within the watershed.
Well, the variance for the house size is one thing.
Right.
I get that. But there's a part of the watershed protection district, the no discharge zone, is this located in the non-dischargeable zone? That would then require a subsequent variance or not?
It is, this is within the.
Knowing that most of that was created prior to the sewer being.
Right, and that was.
Being put there. I know it all predates the sewer, but I just, the variance is the variance. I just want to understand. Is there a second variance that's needed?
I believe the application was for the variance.
And, you know, and whether it is or it isn't, I mean, we're only going to look at what's before us.
Yeah.
Right?
The application's only for the buildable area.
Yes, we have, okay.
No.
I don't see any application for watershed.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, does it say it? Okay, well, I didn't mean to throw a curveball at you. I just wanted, so, okay, this is the 50% requirement.
Correct.
And it was part of that whole district, okay. So we got new plans, right? What else do we have? The watershed permit plan that's going to go before the planning board?
Correct. And the watershed special permit plan, which has now been revised, there's been a second sheet added. And the proposal is to install a subsurface drainage chamber designed to catch any additional runoff from added impervious area. And that also, the submission also included the Christiansen &amp; Surges stormwater calcs. And again.
So I see a subsurface system, so outside of the 100-foot no non-disturbance zone?
Correct. It's outside of the 100-foot non-disturbance zone.
So that it, so I, okay, so it doesn't need a waiver then?
So.
If you're outside of the non-disturbance, if you're outside of the non-disturbance zone, okay. So that's going to go to planning, and they'll tell you if you need a waiver, right?
Right, and it definitely has to go to planning. I mean, there's no question. But there were issues, I guess, at the last hearing raised with respect to concerns about drainage impacts and the amount of impervious area being added.
Right.
So Christiansen &amp; Surges completed some engineering work, submitted some drainage calcs, which we've included, and they've designed a proposed subsurface detention system to handle any added runoff.
But if it hasn't been filed, not to be difficult, but if it hasn't been filed at planning, it hasn't been peer-reviewed with respect to the drainage calcs, right?
Right.
Is that what, is this what you're referring to? Is that what this is?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Which I have no idea what it said.
But we're not even, you know, if, in approval of the 50% requirement, in the context of your petition, I don't know if that necessarily translates to an approval of the subsurface design if an additional waiver is needed.
Yeah?
Right? We can, you know, to be technical, because I think that's our job, notwithstanding what's going on. If the board's inclined to grant the variance as it relates to the structure, and you go to planning, fine. But if you need a separate waiver in terms of the placement of that subsurface area, you still might have to come back for that. Because I don't know what the answer to that is. I don't know where, you know, what that trigger is, you know. You know what I mean? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I do, I do know what you mean.
In terms of the lot, in terms of the lot area, the placement, and whether that's in the part of the discharge area that needs a waiver or not. So, it could be a condition, but if it's not a requested waiver, then you still have to come back on that one, is the way I look at it. So, we'll only, I think it's great that you've included it.
Mm-hmm.
Those, that's my thoughts on it.
I, I hear what you're saying.
Because I don't know if there's been a determination by the building inspector or a finding is, you know, whether, whether a waiver is needed as it relates to that component and where it's related.
Yeah, well, I, and I think it definitely, it definitely needs to be obviously approved by planning. The, I think the issue is within the language of the zoning bylaw, where it talks about the waiver being needed for, in addition to a structure.
Yeah. That's what we're looking at.
Right.
We could condition something else, but if the building inspector or planning says that a subsequent waiver is needed, you know, that's...
Yep.
Just want to be clear on that.
I, I, I hear what you're saying. I mean, I just, if we could maybe just kind of work a little bit through what we've submitted and what we proposed, I'm also going to raise yet another, another issue with...
I'm not trying to create another issue.
Oh.
I'm trying to understand what was before me, and I just, I saw some nice plans and, but there's no planning filing, and, you know, so I just want to be clear on that. Okay, so, sure.
The, but, just, you know, I guess the proposal to add the, the detention or drainage detention was specifically to address the concerns which were raised last meeting about added runoff and, and how it impacts the, the watershed here.
Yeah, right.
So, in that regard, overall, I think it's, it's an improvement to, to the proposal, I think. If we look at the watershed special permit requirement when it was created, what the real issue was, at least at the time, you know, you're 100% correct, it was really subsurface septic systems. A lot of those issues are gone, alleviated, because now we're connected here to, to sewer. But in terms of the spirit and intent of that bylaw, protecting the watershed, I think that this proposal actually makes the lot substantially better for protecting the watershed inasmuch as, you know, we now will have capacity to, to, you know, retain and treat any runoff which would otherwise be flowing directly through into the watershed, even under current conditions. And I think...
Did we get an elevation of, of, of the second floor and what it's going to look like?
I, I think it was included on the original plan.
Oh, yeah, Paul's got it. Okay. All right. Okay, so we got it.
Yes, September.
September, yeah. Okay, yeah.
September, right?
September, yeah. Okay, we got it. All right, sorry. Yep, got it, okay. All coming back through now. Okay.
All right, so on the existing condition, I think it said 18, 18.6, and, and then on the proposed, it was 34.6, I guess sheet A3 and A4.
Is it a one-story building now or two stories?
Now, I believe it's, it's one-story with, with a partially, like, subsurface basement.
Because what I'm reading here on this plan, existing two-story, existing condition, it said existing two-story dwelling. So, you're kind of confusing me that you're adding another level on, or is it already one, two levels?
It's, it's, what's considered, I think, as existing two-story is first floor with a basement is the two stories. And then they're adding a, I guess, a third story above that, which is really two stories with a basement.
Okay.
So, I think, I think overall, the proposal to add the, the detention basin, you know, regardless of, of whether or not, you know, regardless, I guess, of the, the spirit and intent and of not having to really deal with any effluent issues from a septic system here, it nonetheless will capture the runoff and, and better infiltrate it into the ground and treat it so that there isn't as much of a free flow into the watershed as, as would presently exist.
You weren't changing the footprint, right, initially?
What's that?
There was, at the first hearing, the footprint wasn't changing, right? You were using the same footprint, you were just going up.
Correct.
So, there was, there was minimal disturbance?
Well, yes, except that although we weren't changing the footprint, there was overhang being added on, on the second floor. And then there was also the covered porch area and then the deck, which was being added.
But how does that, how does that drive, I guess I'm failing to see how that drives the need to design a whole subsurface detention area if you're not changing the footprint. I mean, it seems like overkill to me. Am I missing something?
Well, I, I think at the last hearing, drainage issues were raised as a significant concern, also because of just the change in the driveway you'll see from the existing condition. So, the way this is, the way this is, and, now, there isn't, there isn't a substantial, I agree with you, in terms of footprint, there isn't a substantial change, but...
But how is, I mean, how, I mean, is this something the planning board is going to need in order, for your special permit approval? Are they looking for this type of design?
Well, I mean, I would say...
Given, given you're hardly doing anything to the land to begin with?
I would say, I mean, it's, it's the gold standard. I mean, and if we're willing to proffer the gold standard in an attempt to, to get what, what we would like, which is a livable second floor, which is, it's really difficult in the context of, of what we're dealing with in terms of size limitations, because it is a really small house, and when you're limited to 50% of the house, you're not able to get the necessary number of bedrooms onto the second floor that he otherwise needs to fit his family into it.
It just seems like you're disturbing a whole bunch of land that you wouldn't otherwise have to disturb to, to put this in. I, so, I don't know if it's needed. I mean, you know, in terms of, I mean, the 50% number to me is objectively some kind of an arbitrary number. I, I don't know what it meant at the time when it was, I don't know what it means today in terms of how they came up with 50%, what the difference would be between 49 and 51%, how it relates to the use and how it drives. I mean, it's arbitrary, so...
I, I couldn't agree with you more, but it exists.
So, okay, so, so that's the regulation, you know? I mean, I like the fact, what I like, I mean, truthfully, what I liked about your plan initially is that you weren't really disturbing a lot of the land.
I mean, we're, we're...
But I don't know, but we're not necessarily approving this plan anyway. You know, you're just saying, we're not approving the drainage system. That's not something that we're approving because there's, that, that's a planning board issue.
I, I agree.
You're saying it's, it drives the variance. It drives the variance, so this is what you're proposing to put in?
Well, and also, though, I think the other, the other thing that we were kind of thinking about was, you know, was suggested at the last meeting that we include both a zoning endorsement and a, and a planning endorsement on the watershed plan, whereas we would hope to keep just the variance plan and separately have the flexibility to deal with the planning board when we go to the planning board. So, it was an attempt to kind of proffer the gold standard and then it...
But it only calls for the planning board's signature on the detention plan as it relates to the, to the...
I, I understand that.
Doesn't call, it doesn't call for our endorsement.
Right.
Because it's beyond our scope. The only thing that it would call for is whether or not a variance is needed to disturb that area and install that chamber.
And, and...
And the calculations that drive it.
But he's not in front of us for that now. He's just in front of us for the building of the home.
Yeah, so I, that's exactly right.
So, he's going to have to come in front of us anyway, so basically this application...
What you're saying on the plan, it doesn't call for us.
Right.
It only calls for us on this plan here.
Correct. So, again, this conflicting plans.
It doesn't, and our plan doesn't show whether or not the chamber goes in or not.
Right, and so, so what, if you look at what, what I had suggested, and this was just a suggestion, just because, on the one hand, you had requested or asked us to think about including the zoning endorsement on the watershed special permit plan at, at the prior meeting.
Yeah.
And we would prefer not to do that because we would prefer sequencing to get our variance. We know we've got our variance. Incur further expense move. So, what I had suggested was the possibility of saying, all right, well, you know, you guys have raised, raised drainage concerns. I mean, we would prefer not to have the detention system, but, but what we've done is we said, all right, well, you've raised the concern of drainage, well, what if we do this? And then I suggested, well, we could approve it with a condition that it's subject to the, the planning board's approval of the special permit plan, or, you know, such changes thereto as, as they may require in their review, which at least gets us to the place where, you know, you've...
That makes sense.
Looked at it. I mean, I mean, I, don't get me wrong, I would prefer to take the detention system out altogether, not include it, but we were trying to just address...
Well, we condition, while we can, you know, and I think it's just semantics, it's, you know, what we would condition would be, you know, the stormwater component approved by planning board.
Mm-hmm.
So, which may be this plan or maybe some variation thereof.
Right, and honestly, if that's the case, I would, I would prefer not to have it and leave it in their, in their hands. It was just an attempt to address what issues this board has raised about the concerns. And again, it's, I mean, it's...
That makes sense, I understand.
It would make sense if, if the town zoning bylaw consolidated, you know, the planning board's review in this board as a special permit or consolidated everything under, under the planning, but it's not that way, and...
Well, it's not that way, but you know what? It works, so I understand the nature of this design because it's ultimately, you know, this is what you're showing to mitigate it, and if they approve it, they approve it, and if they don't, they don't. So, I get it. I understand now. I don't have any other questions.
I tend to be, there are occasions when I'm a lot slower than everybody else, Mr. Chair. You, earlier in the, in the, in the hearing, you were asking to determine what is before us, and unfortunately, as I kept reading, I became less clear on what's before us than...
Perhaps this is why I said there's more to come, which I was going to suggest is, again, this is a matter that I wasn't involved in putting the application together, I got involved afterwards. One of the things that you had raised at the last hearing...
The, the, if you're going to stormwater, I totally get...
No, 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 no. One of the things you raised was, was whether we had proper notice in light of there was an error with respect to identifying the incorrect tax parcel. So, another thing that I did was I went and I just pulled it out, I looked at it, and you were correct, we had the wrong tax parcel. However, we had the correct address, correct owner, I think under, we sort of discussed it last time, but I went back and looked, and I, I, I think notice was absolutely adequate with respect to the location of the property. I don't think there was any concern, but in doing that, and this wasn't until just last week, I also looked at the notice and said to myself, we've got a bigger issue and a bigger problem here, which is the notice, I don't think was adequate with respect to identifying all of the variances we're seeking. Because we included, included in the notice was the variance for the size and the watershed. It, it did not make specific mention to the side setback variances, which, in my opinion, is a fatal potentially legal error that we want to correct. So, what we were going to propose to the board would be to seek a continuance tonight. The application requested the relief, it just wasn't included in the, in the legal notice, and then to renotice the side setback issues, continue to the next meeting, at the next meeting as a matter of formality, open a hearing with respect to the side setbacks, have continued the hearing with respect to the 50%, and then potentially consolidate the hearings and have a consolidated decision hopefully issued as to the entire matter.
So, why do you need side setback? You're not, you're staying within the footprint of the building?
Yeah.
So, you're not increasing the non-conforming of the building?
But except on the second floor...
Because of the eaves?
The overhangs. And also, we impact the side setback via the addition of the deck and covered porch on the opposite side, which is not an existing condition.
Oh, it's a covered porch?
Right.
Okay.
Are you going to file a special, a request for a special permit to pre-existing non-conforming or request for another variance? It really, doesn't matter to me, but...
I mean, we could...
The eaves, is the determination that the eaves are impacting the setback?
Excuse me?
The eaves are impacting the side setback?
Yes.
Yeah. Because it's already pre-existing non-conforming on the one side setback, and then the eaves are extending, extending it two feet on that side, on the opposite side, I think the covered porch and deck require variance.
Were you told you needed another variance?
Excuse me?
Were you told you needed another variance?
Yeah.
Did they, was there a finding, did someone tell you?
Yes.
I mean, did the, did the building inspector tell you you needed another variance?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it was, it was in the...
So, I, I think where Paul was going, if you could continue on before you had them off.
Yeah, I'm either continuing to unpack or more tangling this a little bit more, because I only have one application for a variance in mind, which is the setbacks variance request. The notice has two other variances, so it sounds like there's a total of three. The notice covers two, and the application only covers one. So, there are three variances. One is the watershed district, the second is the 50%, and the third is the setbacks.
But what was advertised?
The water, water, it looks like the watershed and the 50%.
So, if it was advertised, I think that's fine.
Except, no setbacks. There's no setbacks in the advertisement or the notice.
And the application doesn't have the 50% for the watershed?
Well, and those are two separate ones, I think.
But the setbacks, okay. Were you told, did the building inspector find that you needed to do the setbacks? Just about. Or did he make a finding that it's pre, that's a pre-existing structure? Or did he not do any?
It says, it says, it says pre-existing setback, actually.
So, he made a finding that a setback wasn't, a side setback wasn't determined because there's a pre-existing...
He made, he made a finding that it wasn't, so, you know, my... He made, he made a finding that it wasn't, so, you know, my suggestion to you, you can, you can do it...
His the variance requested.
I know. Seeking a side yard setback.
But, yet on...
Now, that would've been made with the building department, correct?
But then, on the review form given to them, it said it's a pre-existing...
The review, the review says it's a pre-existing. So, let's just work with what you advertised tonight. Let's, let's start there.
Mm-hmm.
Because my suggestion to you is if you wanted us to make a decision on what you advertised, you know, the board is, if the board wants to, they're within their purview to do that, and then anything else you needed to revisit with the building inspector, you're not precluded from coming back at a later date. But I think you would need clarification from them. So, I don't necessarily know where we would have to slow you down as it related to the 50 percent or whatever was noticed in the paper, you know? I think, I think that's, but that's, you know, if it changes, if it means the plan's different or different things are different, then maybe you do have to make a continuance, but that's your call in terms of, you know, I think that that's, that's, as far as the notice is, you know, we're, we're tied to the advertiser.
Right, the notice, I, I mean, I, I guess, the variance application that I'm looking at, they did request the variance in the application for the setbacks, but...
But conflict with the determination.
Conflict. So, um...
So, I'd hate for you to lose a month if you didn't need to based on what you advertised, if, unless the plan is different, you know?
No, and I, well, I mean, I think, I don't think, I don't think the, the building plan is, is going to be different. I think the issue that, and I would like to move forward with that, and if we're okay with saying that it was by virtue of this building inspector's decision deemed to be pre-existing setbacks, um...
Was this yours? Or Ellen's?
That's mine.
Oh, sorry. Went to the wrong side. So, you know, I mean, I guess it's up to, you know, what's comfort level and what you're looking for, but...
I, I guess I would, I would ask Mr. Chair, I think, again, if we can, just put it in, please. The universe of variance that we're seeking, not necessarily advertised, not necessarily applied for, the universe of variances are, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm gonna read from the notice, the, the notice has two variances. One is watershed district construction of a second-story addition. That's a very, that's a variance request in the notice and advertised. The second one is 50 percent, and the third one is setbacks, okay?
Correct.
Is, is that, that's a fair universe of what we're seeking at the end of the road.
The end of, yep.
What I have in my packet, and I think Alexandria and Ellen the same, is we have setbacks as far as an application goes. I don't have an application for the watershed construction or the 50 percent. I, we have some, we have plans and some supporting documentation, I just don't have the variance request.
And you know what? This, the, what hap, I, I do know one thing that happened. When the day it was submitted, it was ident, identified that there was an issue and a page two was reinserted with the, the building department. So, perhaps it didn't get updated in, in all of the applications, but the official application that was submitted did include the, so, side bet, side yard setback relief from 30 to 11-4 on the east side and 30 to 19-7 on the covered porch and to 14-1 on the uncovered porch, and said existing setback is 23-8 at the area in question. There's a second line that, that was added, I don't know if it was in yours, also seeking relief from the 50 percent gross floor area expansion limit on construction, structures under 2,500 square foot in the watershed district. Had I drafted that, I might've been more clear that it, you know, by virtue of saying 50 percent expansion, I, I think it contemplates the fact that you're seeking a variance, A, for expansion of a structure, and then B, the 50 percent area, I mean, but, but this was...
So, whether or not you amended what you filed...
Mm-hmm.
We draft, we drafted a... You don't have that?
Right, and...
So...
So, for me, what I'm looking at is a total incomplete application. So, for me, I suggest, I mean, I would, I'm not even gonna look at this because for me, I don't know what's right, right, what's wrong. I would suggest taking everything for January, getting everything on, taking a look at it, because you did have a couple of months to look at it, you know, because you were continued. So, being here in front of me unprepared, kind of gives me a sour taste. So, if you come back in January with everything prepared, everything that's requested, everything that's needed, everything that's advertised, everything that we need to make a fair judgment, whether it's on here or not, and I'm not gonna question it, for me, I mean, I would suggest you to come back, because I'm already drawing a blank on the whole thing anyways right now.
It's curable, I mean, and...
It is, it is.
Because you can amend the application to affect what you advertised, and that's, if it hasn't already been filed, just 'cause, you know, I, I don't know, it's not up here, but, you know, I mean, that's, that's curable.
Absolutely.
You know, I, you know, I have a comfort level with what was advertised, but...
I have zero comfort level.
Ellen has no comfort level. That's fine. That's fine. She's, you know, the decision is gonna be based on the deliberation and...
And, and that's fine, and, and again, I mean, you know, I came into tonight after looking at this thinking, we, we didn't, we didn't notice side setbacks, and our plan was to request a variance, but it was...
You gotta find out if you need it, because, I mean, there's some discrepancies. I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna follow that track and you're gonna come back in January, find out if you need it, because maybe what you advertised, you don't need...
I'll confirm it with Dawn, is what I'll do as to, as to...
Maybe he would suggest you file a special permit for, you know, a nonconforming structure, you know, we've done in the past, just accepting the whole, you know, I don't know, see what he's gonna do. And then you got that, and then maybe it is cleaner that way. I hate for you to lose the month, but...
Right.
So, he's not losing anything?
How much time do you think you need to clean up the whole thing, to present the details to us?
Well, I guess the issue is, is this, if...
Because I'm on Ellen's side, I'm a little confused, so...
It, I, I think the issue is this, in terms of how much time, if...
One meeting, two meetings?
But if I, if I talk to, to Dawn and he says his, "Oh, I thought about that, this is pre-existing nonconforming, you don't need the variance," then we don't have a notice issue, then it's probably one meeting. If Dawn were to say...
That's why I've just had a baby, right?
Dave, I'm, I'm saying, oh, I don't know about Dawn.
He's talking about the building, the inspector buildings.
I'm talking about the building, Inspector Dawn.
Inspector, her building.
And, yes, as opposed to building commissioner. So, um, so, I, I mean, we'll continue, we'll, for present purposes, we'll continue for, for the next meeting.
If you have a new filing, if you have a new filing, they can be heard contemporaneously. You know, we can open a hearing and, you know, we can do that.
And if we, if it ends up that we need more time to notice a new hearing, um...
Terms of the deadline?
I'll, I would see...
Well, you gotta be getting tight on that. How close are we on that?
Yeah, it's, yeah, so...
You're realistically talking about...
If it, new notice, it would be needed to be made in two days. If it were just for purposes of the side setbacks, I could probably pull it together because it's included in the application, if it were something else.
Well, here's the, the correct, so you're gonna be, you're gonna be here January 9th, either, or, if not, then you're gonna have an application for continuance.
Valerie can work with you, I mean, the real, the real trick on that
Yep.
is the advertising deadline.
Right.
I think he's...
So, she knows something's coming.
I think, I think it's coming up in two days, is the deadline, right?
The real, the real deadline?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Okay, I'm happy to make a motion to continue, Mr. Chair. Before I do, however, I just want to point out to Attorney Vaughn that on the revised plan that you sent, the deed reference is still incorrect.
Okay.
It's, it's page 202, I believe, not page 420.
Okay.
So, with, with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing to January 9th, 2018.
Motion, second.
With the condition that you review this full application in...
I will absolutely review the whole thing. I'll make sure...
And making sure that it's...
You know, holidays are coming up.
No.
January 9th, after that, January 1st, you're...
Motion, a second, more favor?
If, if it's not, if it's, you know, if, if we end up that we need more time, I'll sign a continuance. I won't be in front of you until we have everything cleaned up, accurate, in order. The, the one thing, I guess, I would just maybe like to kind of survey a little bit is the issue about...
I can't let you survey anything, I got a motion in a second. I got a motion in a second to continue.
Okay, all right.
Okay. All a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you stand continued? Thank you. All right, what's next? We have one new hearing now, right?
Nope, we opened it and we've continued.
Oh, we opened it.
No evidence was heard?
Oh, so it's a continued hearing?
It's a finding, correct. It was opened, no evidence was heard.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Vaughn.
A finding.
Okay, so we have an aggrieved party hearing, that's what Attorney Caffrey is here for, right? A petition of Harrah Development, party agreed for the property located at 1503 Osgood Street, about the end of a mass map, 34 parcel 0007, in the CDD III zoning district pursuant to MGLA, chapter 48, section 8.
High Street's off the, the board tonight, right?
What?
High Street.
High Street is off the board, uh...
Till January 9th.
Till January 9th. This is our last hearing for tonight. Trey Caffrey, I guess the floor shows.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I represent Harrah Development Corporation. This is an application for a finding, relates to my client's desire to construct a mini self-storage or self-storage facility on Osgood Street. The location we're talking about here, just as the board understands, is, it's, I think it's a shell station, Mr. Chairman, that's in front, then there's a side street that's, I believe, Orchard Hill Road, technically, and this would be a location that's up behind that in the CDD III district, kind of a little bit elevated behind the shell station. So, the, the situation that my client finds itself in, Mr. Chairman, is that he, he would like to construct this self-storage facility, but when we approached the building inspector regarding that issue, we were instructed, and I have included a copy of the decision of the building inspector in the packet, which you all should have in front of you, it's my letter dated October 19th, essentially saying, essentially telling us that the requested use is not allowed in the CDD III district. So, and it, and it is also true, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that if you look at the table of uses and you look at the permitted uses in the CDD III, that is in fact the case, there's no, nothing called out specifically for self-storage. So, the issue then became for us as, as to how to proceed with this particular request, and we began to look, or I began to look, at how the board has handled previous applications for self-storage facilities in, in the town, and I'm gonna mention, I have listed a few on my, on my applic, on my papers here, Mr. Chairman. Some of them you may know, some you may not, but the one that is closest to the, the place where we're talking about is 1701 Osgood Street, that's the extra space self-storage facility, that's that large building that is across the street more or less from Lucet. As you're driving down 125, it would be on your right-hand side, so, I think it's about a three-story building, and I have a photo of it in the packet. That's a self-storage facility. The others that I've noted in my packet, Uncle Bob's down on 1171 Turnpike Street, that's clear across the other side of town, that's down towards the, the, the line there, towards Middleton, and then 492 Sutton, that would be another mini self-storage facility, that's up at the airport. So, these three self-storage facilities all came into being in the town at various points in time, all of them being permitted by this board in one form or another, without there being any allowed use technically under the, called out, I should say, under the table of uses for self-storage, and the question, of course, then becomes, "How did that happen?" And the answer, Mr. Chairman, is the board has, I don't wanna call it a practice, but has, has in the past allowed for a special permit application to be filed to allow these things to happen. And that, in fact, is what we're seeking. If I could describe it as, I'm looking for an on-ramp here to get in front of the board on a special permit application to allow my client to at least present his plan to the board regarding this use. And when we look at the other locations, and I, I'm not gonna repeat everything that's in my papers, I'll be happy to talk about any specific, specific example that I've given, these are all situated more or less, and certainly in the case of extra space, more or less in the same types of areas that we are seeking to build our self-storage facility in. That is, we're not in residential areas, we're in, in the case of the, the place that we're looking at, this was formerly the IS district, it was transformed into, or whatever the right word is, into the CDD III district in 2008. It is the same district in which extra space is located, and so it has the same quality. And, you know, I'm sure you all know the area I'm talking about. It's perfectly suited to this kind of use, but again, it's not called out expressly in the table of uses, and I, I would put it to the board that it's impossible to call it every single potential use in the table of uses. The one, however, that is closest to this use is a warehouse use, and that, in fact, is how the board has looked at, and I've given the, the specific language in the previous board decisions, how the board has looked at self-storage as a, as a type of use that is not the same as, but is somewhat like or comparable to warehousing. These are different, and I, I don't wanna make the board, I don't wanna suggest to the board in any way that I'm saying that they're the same. They're not. Self-storage has its own quality, they're, they're, we're talking about numerous units that are within a building, as opposed to warehousing, which suggests a single entity that's storing its materials or whatever it might be. These are individual units that are located within a large building. So, I, I understand that difference. However, there is a quality to them, they're both storage, they're both storage uses, and they seem to work well in the town so long as they're situated properly, and that's what the special permit process is really about. So, tonight...
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
I'm looking at the table of uses.
Yes.
You're saying that warehousing and wholesaling is allowed under CDD III?
Yes.
Okay. I'm also seeing, and it says that, as a yes, just that's all it says. And it says it with respect to I-2, and it says it, yes, with respect to IS. Are those two underlying zones, the zones that the other self-storage units are on, that you submitted as part of your application?
So, extra space is in, is in what was IS, now CDD III. The Uncle Bob's storage is now located in the I-2. That was, that was 1988, but that's in the I-2 now, and, and the last one, 492 Sutton Street, that's located in the, I know where that's located, hang on a second.
492 Sutton, is that IS as well?
I can't believe I didn't write that down. I can, I can get you the answer, oh, wait a minute.
I might be...
I have it here, hang on a second. It's, I have the application, I believe, here. It's Industrial One Zoning District. Reading very quickly here, Mr. Chairman, it looks like the I-1, is that possible?
Well, I-1 is a no with an asterisk, says see detailed district use regulations in section four of the bylaw.
Yeah.
Section 4 of the bylaw," as to I-1.
I'm reading too fast.
It's okay.
I'm looking at the actual notice of decision for 492 Sutton Street and making a reference to the Industrial 1 zoning district. But I can check that, Mr. Chairman, make sure that that's in fact where that's located.
All right.
What I'm suggesting to the board is that we be permitted, I can understand why the building inspector issued a decision, he did. He takes the position that if it's not called out expressly in the table of uses or in the zoning regs, that it's not allowed. However, given the history of the way the board has handled these matters in the past, I'd suggest that it would be a fair and reasonable decision for the board to at least allow us to present on a special permit basis this particular use. It's compatible with the area, and it would be, in our opinion, it would be the best use of that particular site, all things considered. So I would, and again, this is only a use determination. I haven't presented plans because, in my view, we have to get over this, through this particular hurdle before we even get into the details of what we're proposing. So that's my purpose here tonight.
Okay. Yeah, well, it's an interesting position. There's a legal opinion that we got a few years ago on a use-related matter within an IS district that I want to reference. I haven't had a chance to reference it yet. It was a Sutton Street, it was a Sutton Street project, construction of something within an IS district, and there was a legal opinion that came to us, I recall, that had to do with the board's authority as it relates to these kinds of decisions. So I think that Valerie is going to try to find that for us because I'd like to read it on a threshold issue. Notwithstanding that, as it relates to the merits, it's an interesting argument, you know, in terms of a party aggrieved, given the history. I don't know if anybody else has any other thoughts on it?
Yeah. I drove by here. You made mention, it's, there's a street that's next to the Shell station?
Yeah, it's a Shell station, and then you can turn into the Shell station from Orchard Hill Road, or you can continue to go straight.
So as I'm looking at the Shell station, is the road to the left or to the right?
As you're standing at the, if you're looking at the Shell station, it's to the right.
Okay, I know the road. Okay, because I pulled out there.
And it's a kind of, it kind of goes up a little bit.
Yeah.
And then it's that back lot.
So the frontage of this particular building, should it be allowed, wouldn't it actually be on Osgood Street? It would be on whatever name this street is here, right?
That's correct. I struggled with this a little bit because Orchard Hill Road.
I mean, you're looking at it, to me, with an Osgood Street address.
It is an Osgood Street address. I searched to see if this had a separate address. It's not called out as a separate address. I'm warning it's a fire department. If we did, in fact, if it was allowed by the board, whether they, we'd have a new address for that particular location. Right now, that is the address that the.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, visually, visually, somebody driving down Osgood Street, looking at what's on Osgood Street, wouldn't be seeing this building?
Interesting. You'd have to really look. I think you'd really have to look.
Yeah, but I mean, if I'm driving in a car.
Right, it's not the first building.
It's not the first.
It's behind.
I got to look.
Correct. That is absolute.
So as far as the landscape of Osgood Street, this wouldn't really interrupt.
It would not.
The visual impact of Osgood Street.
It's kind of the opposite, if you will, of extra space. Extra space is a big doling. I was out there looking.
But it would really be on the side street?
It would. It would be up and.
Behind the Shell station?
Correct.
So somebody would visually probably see the Shell station first and have to look at this building?
You would. I think you'd have to stop and.
Yeah, okay. But it has this Osgood Street address?
Yes. Yes, it does.
But it wouldn't be visually, you know, I'm being redundant here.
No, no, I agree with you. I think, you know, we, I can give you some eleva, when we get to that point, I think we could show you some elevations. But when I stood there and I looked at it, to me, you're looking at the Shell station first. That's what you're looking at, and then this building is going to be.
And this street is an industrial zone street.
It's in the CDD3.
Right.
So it says warehousing is allowed. I mean, what is another form of warehousing?
You know, that's, for me, that's why I worded the application for finding either as it's allowed as of right, because this is warehousing, and I've looked for definitions of warehousing, and what does warehousing mean? So in the generic term, warehousing might include this because it's the storage of personal property. However, if you take the view that warehousing is really a commercial, a single commercial entity that's storing its own property in its own places, then it's more like mini storage, and so you end up in that other location. And therefore, I would suggest this is a special permit kind of situation where you need to, the board needs to look at it and decide whether it's a compatible use. I know that there is a decision, a decision, a statement from, I believe it's Charlie Foster. I've included that as at Exhibit, hey, hey. Exhibit 3 for what it was worth back in 1985. And at that time, which is ancient history, and I know that, but at that time, it seemed to be within, sorry, 1985. But at that time, it was his opinion that mini warehousing is properly within the zone, Industrial 2. And I get from that that he believes it's subsumed within warehousing. He doesn't say it that way, but that was the gist of what I got from his 1985 letter. I think it's up for, it's up for discussion as to whether or not these things are the same or they're different. I would at least, my client would at least like the opportunity to submit on a special permit basis if the board was not inclined to see it as a.
Will the special permit go to us?
Say again?
Is the special permit granted by us?
I believe it is, yeah. Yes, it is.
But you already received one.
Did I already receive a special?
Yeah, this building, this, in the packet, you had already applied for a special permit for this?
No, we, no, I was trying to figure out how to get this in front of the building inspector to tee it up. And so the decision was to ask the building inspector for a building permit. And so what ended up happening next was he issued a use determination, which is attached as Exhibit 1.
What do you have in here for the 2099 and the?
Oh, those are all other buildings.
Oh.
That's what other folks have done.
I saw my name on it.
Sorry.
You've been around that long, huh?
I.
Yes.
Not though 1985, right?
No, not, but I was born.
So, you know, to go back to sort of the analogy, I'm looking for an on-ramp here. I'm looking for at least an opportunity to present to you. You can look at it on the merits and make a determination as to whether it fits and is compatible and so forth under the rules for a special permit. That's all we're really looking for is a hearing.
I'm going, I apologize. I was going through my stuff that, from our, Tom Erbelis, our old town council, because I remember this coming up before the warehousing, and I remember a memo came out about it. And I have an old book here with a lot of stuff that I'm trying to find because he used to, I used to keep his memos. So I apologize. So I was.
It seems like it's sort of been something that has come up from time to time.
It has.
And the board kind of deals with it ad hoc, and so it's coming up again because my client now would like to do the same thing. And, you know, ultimately, the fix might be the town meeting, you know, to just change the table of uses. Maybe that's the ultimate fix.
I think what they're doing right now is addressing the issue by looking at the bylaw, and we have someone, Judy, I forget her name, there. She's reviewing the bylaw and using the definitions in the conflicting part of that, and she's going forward with that.
I wouldn't expect that she's getting as granular as inserting self-storage as one of the uses.
No, but she's clearing it out, yes.
It's a category worth getting to Judy and saying, hey, Judy.
But I think your special permit would be before the planning.
You don't think it would be before zoning?
Well, I mean, uses under the CCD districts, I think you'd have to go through.
16.5.
But regardless, he's not here for that, so.
You're just trying to get to that.
Well, no, he, you know, I'm just clarifying that.
Hasn't all of the other ones come in front of zoning, though?
That was back when, before, like wireless used to come before zoning.
It was before the CDD3.
Was created.
Before Judy took a crack at the zoning code.
But it does say warehousing or wholesaling, so it does say that. Is there a definition that you have for us on warehousing?
So there is a, I've included, Attorney Burton Kleinfeld did a survey, if you will, and I've included that for you, as to how other jurisdictions back in the 80s was dealing with this issue. And I'll tell you, I want to be upfront with the board, you can find as many definitions of this as you wish to find. The concept, however, is that, the generic concept of warehousing is that it's the storage of property. So then the question is, what is self-storage? And that is the storage of property, but it's done on a consumer level. It's independent units. And so the argument that is being presented to me, at least from the building inspector's position, is that that's different. That is a different thing, different from warehousing. I made the argument, which he did not accept, that it was very much like, if not exactly like, a warehousing use. It fell into the same category. So we agreed to disagree, and that's why I've worded my application the way I have, that it's either something that is allowed as of right under warehousing, or it should be at least allowed, I should at least be permitted, my client should be permitted to submit a special permit application. And you may well be right on planning. I know I have to be here first on the interpretation of the zoning bylaw because that's where, that's where I've been stopped, essentially.
Right, you're stopped here. Yeah, I was just generally glancing at that, the CDD requirements, so I didn't read it very carefully.
So if I could ask, I think what I'm hearing you say is, if the board were inclined to overturn the building inspector's finding, so grant your request for finding, then I think I heard you say you still have to come back to the board to say, is it okay? So I guess what is the, again, I'm probably in an eight-year-old mode here. As an eight-year-old, if we, if the board is inclined to agree that self-storage is a category of warehousing and therefore grant your request, how come you still have to come back to the board and say, is self-storage warehousing? Well, I would certainly accept that as a possibility. I did ask for that, and I guess I'm humbly before the board because I'm thinking that would be a wonderful thing if you would find that. I do believe that mini warehousing is warehousing. That's what I think. And I submitted my application in that vein. And if you were to determine that, then it would be allowed as of right, and we would not be before the planning board.
It would be allowed by special permit.
Well.
Wouldn't be allowed by right.
Well, it would be allowed, oh, sorry.
It would be allowed, if we were to find that self-storage is a form of warehousing.
Right, sorry.
Then pursuant to CDD3, right?
Right.
It's an allowed use?
Right, I'm looking at the.
But it would still be subject to a special permit, no?
No, CDD3, so I'm looking at 16.4, CDD3 permitted uses, and warehousing is number 12, warehousing and wholesaling. So that would be under permitted uses. So if you, if you were to hold that mini, mini ware, I don't know why I keep saying mini warehousing, self-storage, if you were to hold that self-storage is a form of warehousing.
It's an allowed.
Then it would be an allowed use in a CDD3, I think would be done. And that would be wonderful if you were to find that.
Well, wait a second. So there's a section here that talks about, under that, it says uses subject to a special permit.
Right.
The following uses may be allowed in the corridor development districts by the granting of special permit. No building or structure in excess of 3,000 gross square feet shall be constructed.
And that's, we would be before you on that because our building would exceed that square footage?
So the use may be allowed by right.
Sorry.
But the way in which you want to use it.
Correct.
Is likely going to need a special permit.
Correct.
So. I don't necessarily think that, I think you're only looking for us to find that the use is allowed.
That would be, that would be the, that would solve that problem, and then I'd be back to solve my other problem, which is a square footage issue. But yes.
That might be a bigger problem.
It could be a bigger problem. I agree with that, yes.
Yeah, so 16.5 is something you should definitely become familiar with.
Yes.
I think. But, okay, well, I'll leave this up to you guys tonight. You know, there is definitely a legal random I was looking for, but if you guys are interested in, have you submitted everything you want to submit?
I have, and I'm happy to have the hearing closed at this point if the board doesn't have any more questions for me. I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair.
I'm fine.
Okay. Then why don't, then why don't we close the hearing?
Motion to close, Mr. Chair.
Second motion.
What, did we, what?
Yeah, first and second.
Oh, either feet.
Yeah, it's at a feet.
Yeah. You really should let Helen second something every now and then.
All right, Helen, I withdraw my second.
No, forget it.
I withdraw my motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, there's a motion in a second. So any further discussion?
And a public comment and all, or?
No. Do you have standing? Do you represent anybody within 300 feet that got notice?
It's 9:40.
It's free, it's going to get called out, black guys.
No, seriously, I'm not being fresh. Do you, do you represent anybody, or do you own anything within 300 statutory feet?
I suppose it's probably none within 300 feet.
Okay.
Are you on the abus list?
Are you on the abus list? Okay, then no.
That was fun.
Okay. So there's a motion there. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, so then we'll just, Doug?
We have to, we have to make a motion to.
Oh, we're just closing the public hearing?
Yeah.
Right, okay. So all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I get ahead of myself. You threw me a curve ball there, Attorney Vaughn.
The motion would be to override the building inspector, correct?
No, it's always to, no, it's always in the positive.
What is the request?
I'm happy, I'm happy to make the motion, Mr. Chair, if the board is, does the board not have anything to deliberate?
Nope.
No. So on the petition of Harrow Development Corporation, party agreed for property of 1503 Osgood Street, map 034.0, parcel 007, North End of Mass, 01845, in the CDD3 zoning district pursuant to MGL, Chapter 48, Section 8, make a motion to grant the appeal of the building inspector's determination that self-storage facility is not an allowed use in the CD3, CDD3 district.
And find, and. But we're being asked to make a specific finding that self-storage is a component of warehousing.
I think you said that with this grant in itself, storage facility is not allowed use.
He said grant the appeal, but he didn't say what the appeal was.
Self-storage facility is not allowed use.
Okay.
In the CDD3 district.
So grant the appeal that the self-storage isn't allowed use warehousing in the corridor development district 3.
Okay.
CDD3.
I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second by Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you, Ellen.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, so then we'll call, we'll call the vote?
Yes.
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 Ellen?
Wait, so a yes vote is going for the building inspector, saying?
No, a yes vote is going for.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I'm going to say yes also.
See, I can't say yes.
So I'll declare that unanimously approved. We will issue a decision within 14 days.
Thank you, all.
Thank you. All right. And winding down, two correspondents have come in, right? One is from Chappa, dated November 27th, and the other one is from the Mass Housing Partnership, dated November 21st. Is that it?
I also just want to make a note that we have a special meeting on next one day, December 20th. At 7:00. And this is just going to be here in the wireless facility only and nothing else.
It's one I was thinking, too. I know I've got your emails. Do you have the package yet for 122, but those were mailed out.
Okay.
As well, but David's, Icetrop, he did another pair of gifts, the one that he received. I should have that tomorrow.
Okay.
Hopefully tomorrow, Thursday, I'll put those in the mail, you know.
Okay, great.
Will we get it in time, or is it? Are you able to email, get something small, or no?
I, I mean, I can. It's up to you guys. I mean, I can.
Oh, you don't check your email?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I do.
Yeah, no, I mean, some of you do, some of you don't. So, I mean, it's totally up to you, but it's definitely a nailable. I can, what do you guys want?
Ellen needs it, Ellen requires it to...
No, I have Ellen now, yeah. I'll just mail them, it's fine.
Just do it, yeah.
Ellen's doing the C D marriage, you know, yeah. Now where you have a hard copy in front of you.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll hear...
Just to let you know, just to let you know, that was paid by the applicant. So our peer review was paid by, not by the town and not the end of it was paid by the applicant. Okay. I can call off then.
So I'll hear a motion to close.
Ellen?
Nope.
I'll hear a motion to close.
Motion to close, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor? You stand adjourned.